Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This open meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. We have two public hearings this evening that will include an opportunity for public comment related to the subject of those hearings. For the record, I will now confirm attendance of planning board members. When I call your name in alphabetical order, please respond that you are present. Mr. Alpert.
Present.
Artie Crocker.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
And Natasha Spada. We note for the record that Natasha does not currently appear on Zoom, and we hope that she will join us. And Alex, if she does, if you could let us know, please, that would be helpful. I'd also like to confirm the attendance of our planning department staff. Alex Klee, present. We see the wave. We're grateful. Thank you. And Lee Newman.
Present.
Very good. For others participating in this meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you. Anything that you share and state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. I will introduce each of the speakers on our agenda. As they conclude their remarks, board members will be asked for any comments, questions, or motions. The following ground rules are designed and applicable to both of our public hearings. The following ground rules are designed to provide for public comment in a respectful manner. We ask that you address your remarks through the chair. We ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes, and it's just as effective to simply say that you agree with a previous speaker instead of repeating the same point that a previous speaker has made for another three minutes. We will cycle through comments between -- we will cycle through public comments between this room and on Zoom, as we see your hands up. We will allow participants to speak a second time if there are no other additional speakers. Your questions may not necessarily be answered as they come up unless the answer is immediately available either by board members, staff, or hearing participants. Otherwise, we will ask staff to note the question so we can provide an answer on our website or at our next hearing. Your observations are particularly helpful, and if you're unable to speak here tonight, we ask that you please submit your comments. All of the board members do go through our packets thoroughly, and especially with comments from the public, which can be emailed to planning@needhamma.gov. That's planning@needhamma.gov. These will be held, as with all other materials, as part of the public record. Our first agenda item this evening is a hearing in relation to a major project site plan, a special permit number 2022-03, in respect of an application for 155-unit senior housing project located at 100-110 West Street. May I please have a motion to waive the reading of the hearing notice?
So moved.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert. May I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Jean McKnight. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing now will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Is Natasha present?
No.
Okay, thank you. And Jean McKnight?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome people from Welltower and Balfour. Mr. Evans, Mr. Hubert, if you're able to bring your crew to the table here and join us. We look forward to the presentation. And as these people assemble in front of us here, we should have -- we'll give everyone a minute to get organized. We have Attorney Evans Hubert. He can respond by saying present.
Present.
And Michael Schonbrunn.
Present.
And Julie Nash.
Julie is appearing.
Remotely?
Yes.
Very good. From Balfour.
I'm here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Elizabeth Peabody.
Present.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ben LaFrance.
Present.
Thank you very much. Eric Fredette.
Here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Aaron, I apologize. I think I said Eric. It's my brother's name. I apologize. And David Kelly, who I understand is appearing remotely. Do we have him on Zoom?
He's been invited. I don't know if he's over.
I see. I see him already.
Present.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much. So Evans, you and your team have 25 minutes to present. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So members of the board who are here in person, as well as those appearing remotely, Mr. Crocker, Ms. McKnight. As you know, we're here on an application for the property at 100 West Street to develop the building that's currently vacant into a 155-unit facility that is entirely assisted living, of which those assisted living include 28 memory care Alzheimer's units. The -- this is a partnership, not in a legal sense, but a sort of a partnership between the owner, Welltower, and the entity that will be operating the facility, Balfour Senior Living. Mr. Schonbrunn from Balfour is here, as well as Julie Nash, who's appearing remotely. We have the same team of professionals that were assisting us the last time when we were before this board, when the operator would have been LCB Senior Living. So it's the same team, the architectural team, Hawk Design, Kelly Engineering, McMahon Associates, and we've also the same.
Excuse me, Evans. May I just ask, is there anybody here from Welltower?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there's -- we were not planning to have Welltower be a presenter, which is why they're not sitting up here, but we have several people here from Welltower.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Capen, Patrick, is here, and then he has some of his colleagues with him.
Okay, thank you.
So the reason for this new application is that Welltower and LCB are no longer business partners. That relationship ended, and the decision was not to go forward with that project. Welltower is partnering with Balfour, with whom Welltower is engaged in a successful project in Brookline right now that's further along in the development process than this one. And, you know, it's a very -- Balfour is a very highly regarded operator that puts forth a really high-quality product for its residents, and they'll talk about that very briefly, recognizing that we need to be brief. We are going to be asking for some zoning relief in connection with this application for a special permit. First of all, we need a special permit because this is a major project. We need a special permit because we are altering a non-conforming building. This building is non-conforming in certain ways that one of the sideline -- we don't meet one of the sideline setbacks from a residential neighborhood, and these are the same sorts of nonconformities that were brought up the last time with LCB. There may be a disagreement about whether or not we need a special permit for this particular use. Unfortunately, the Avery Square Overlay District Bylaw, I believe, is ambiguous on that point. One part of it indicates that a special permit for assisted living is required. Another part of it indicates that it would be allowed as a right. So we don't want to get into a legal fight about that, and it's not a valuable use of anybody's time right now, but we're asking for a special permit in regard to the use, the assisted living, while reserving our rights to take the position, hopefully will not be necessary, that a special permit for that use is not required. And then lastly, we have -- we need a special permit waiving strict compliance with certain aspects of the parking design requirements. And again, these are the same waivers that we asked for last time, and were granted. There are no comments from the police or fire department on this project. The engineering department has some relatively minor comments having to do with stormwater management, and as this board is probably aware, we have been engaged in extensive discussions and meetings with the select board to try to address the concerns and unhappiness that was first expressed when this -- when we met with this board a number of months ago. There was, you know, we're well aware that there are people who are unhappy about the idea that this facility is going to be all assisted living instead of a mixture of assisted living and independent living. We heard that very clearly. We've spent the last few months trying to meet with neighbors, meet with the select board, meet with this board, or at least some of the members of this board, and, you know, provide some perspective on why we think this is a good project and one that will be of benefit to the senior citizens of Needham. And, you know, the independent living would have, or did, in the case of LCB, carry with a requirement for a certain number of affordable units. Assisted living does not have that requirement, and in recognition of the fact that people are, you know, somewhere between disappointed and unhappy about what they perceive as the laws of IL units and with it, the affordable units, the applicant is prepared to make a substantial donation to the town to be used either to -- as a, you know, in the first instance, as a donation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or some other purpose if the town sees that it's more appropriate. We have reached a sort of an agreement in principle with the select board as to what that number will be. The number is $1.9 million, and, you know, I think it's fair to say that the select board is in favor of that. They see that as a significant municipal benefit that comes along with this proposal. It's not something that we're legally required to do, but we want to have a positive working relationship with the town, not an adversarial one. So that's our -- we haven't formalized that agreement in writing, but we have reached that agreement in principle with the select board. With that background, I'm going to ask Mr. Schonbrunn and Julie Nash to speak very briefly about Balfour, and then we will move on to the architectural team. Thank you.
Thank you, Evans. Good evening. I'm Michael Schonbrunn. I'm the founder and CEO of Balfour, and with me virtually is Julie Nash, who's our chief operating officer. And together, we will not speak for more than five minutes, promise, so we can keep things limited. Balfour is a 25-year-old senior housing company, first project opened in 1999, and we have a total of nine operating projects in Colorado and one in Michigan, and we are actively constructing a project in Brookline and another one also in construction in the Washington, DC area. Balfour started by me as a result of my experiences as the only child of a very demanding mother, and when my father died unexpectedly, I assisted her in finding a community that she could live in. My own background was in health care. I had been the deputy commissioner of the State Health Department, and interestingly, at that time, had a number of relationships and working conversations with members of Governor Dukakis's health cabinet at the time, comparing notes on how to improve quality of care for seniors. The company itself, as mentioned, has been operating for some time. We take a lot of pride in being medically competent. We are always concerned that our staff is appropriate in terms of ratios to the residents living there, and we make certain that our staff is trained enough, which is one of the issues, that we don't have very many 9/11 calls at all that we can't handle ourselves. We think that having an appropriate setting for seniors really presents a much more robust sense of life, that the seniors who live in our community, who range from late '60s up to late '90s, and in fact, we have a couple of people now in their 100 category, you know, are still full of interest and activities, and we do our best to make certain they have a robust and lively program, not only on the health care side, but on life enrichment, dining, activities, involvement in the community. We feel very strongly that's an important aspect. At this point, I'm going to ask Julie Nash, who's our chief operating officer, to make a few other additional comments. Julie?
Thank you, Michael. In addition to being the chief operating officer of Balfour, I started my career with Balfour, opening our Balfour Longmont community, which is our newest community here in Colorado, which is a very similar model to what we are proposing in Needham. And the genesis -- Michael's approach to senior living is really about creating the next generation of senior living, not only for the senior experience, but also the associate experience. And every day, he challenges us as executive directors, as department heads, and as an executive team, to look and be thoughtful about what that experience should look like. And that was the genesis of the Longmont community and what we're proposing here in Needham. Part of the pillars -- if we could go back to the previous slide, please. So part of the four pillars and the foundation of Balfour is our life enrichment experience, and really making sure that our residents are going into the community, but also the community is coming into Balfour, and that we are helping empower our residents to live their fullest life. And that's through, not only within our community, but through the external community. We're offering art classes and music and concerts and educational opportunities and partnerships with universities, and exercise classes and travel. And so one of the differentiators of Balfour is that we are not a cookie-cutter community. We really look at the community in which we operate, and so we have basic pillars and expectations of our communities, but each one of our communities, we really look to our residents and their families to help us create the culture within our community. The second pillar of Balfour is the culinary experience, and what we do is, at Balfour, we hire an executive chef, as well as a sous chef, who get to know our residents and their palate and experiences. They also partner with local purveyors and farms to create a fresh menu by the season, as well as having designated waitstaff. The third pillar of Balfour is our complimentary transportation program. Transportation is something that is offered at all senior living communities, but at Balfour, we have a fleet of Teslas and drivers who take the residents to different places, but most communities only offer services for medical appointments. At Balfour, we want to encourage our residents to go and get their hair and meals done. They can get it done in the community, but we encourage them to go and have meals with their families, and really engage in the life of the community in which Balfour is located. And the fourth pillar of Balfour is the continuum of care that we offer. You will hear many Balfour residents and their families or associates refer to Balfour as a family, and it is really important that we offer a continuum of care. We do that internally by offering for our licensed nursing care, but in addition, we partner with ancillary providers, whether it's a dentist, a podiatrist, an audiologist, or even therapy services, to really encourage and allow our residents to live their fullest life and to be able to allow them to benefit as part of our experience of Balfour lifestyle. Next slide, please. Part of the way we do that is we are very committed at Balfour to our design. We have award-winning interiors, and that is really important in creating the community that differentiates Balfour. And we want our residents to be proud of the community that they live in. We want them to invite their friends and family to join them for meals, to join them for Mother's Day breakfast or brunch, and we do that by creating beauty and elegance of a fine resort while also creating a home-like essence. Through high ceilings, abundant lighting, colorful interiors, Michael's wife is an attorney by training, but Susan does all of our design, and her team wins awards for that, but it is really important that our residents are surrounded by beautiful interiors to help create a platform for the community in which we serve our residents and our associates can serve. And then lastly, it is really important that our communities are sustainable. That is a directive directly from Michael, and a passion and something that's really important to him. So the fleet of Teslas that we have are zero emission vehicles, as well as all of our communities participate in recycling and repurposing, and Balfour at Needham would be LEED Gold Certified. And the last slide that we have is just to give you some examples and pictures of actual Balfour communities and our assisted living communities, and to show the community that we can create from the architecture. And Susan and the design team and the architecture firms that we work with really look at the community that the Balfour, the local community, and try to mirror that so that we can then create a community for our residents and associates.
Thank you, Julie. So I'm going to ask Liz Peabody from the architectural team to speak next.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Liz Peabody. I work for the architectural team, like Evans just said. Thank you for the opportunity to represent this project. I know you're all very familiar with this, and in respect of everyone's time, I'm going to try to focus my comments on the changes and improvements that we feel that we've made. If at any point you want me to slow down and talk in more detail about anything, don't hesitate to ask. So here we have our ground floor. It may look quite similar, but there are some key differences that I'm going to hit on. Obviously, as we've talked about at the beginning, the program has been streamlined from IL, AL, and memory care to just AL and memory care. And there are some benefits that the residents at this community are going to be able to enjoy that they wouldn't have been able to previously. First and foremost is that all of the amenity space that you see here will be able to be enjoyed -- well, there's memory care on one side and AL on the other, but all of the amenity space that IL previously had, you know, segmented off from AL will now be able to be enjoyed by all of the residents in the AL community. So they'll have almost double the amount of amenity space than they would have under the previous application, which we think is going to be really exciting for them. There's a lot more space for them to enjoy. Starting at the entry, we've upgraded the entry sequence. This is now enclosed and enlarged a little bit. This is where the valet station and carts-for-move-ins and things like that will be. Previously, it had been proposed to just leave the entry as-is, which did not have the enclosure that -- and we'll look at that a little bit more when we get to the elevations. You can also come in, and you're not directly confronted by that elevator. If, for anyone who's been to the site, knows, you walk in, and you're immediately maybe 10 feet in front of you. There's a solid wall, and there's no view anywhere. Previously, that was going to remain. Now we're relocating those elevators, and you're going to have this nice wide view corridor all the way across the hallway. And then when you turn immediately to your left, you're going to have these beautiful double-height spaces, similar to the images that you just saw, which is going to have a big wow moment, and really open up that space and have a great airy, light atmosphere, which we feel is very important. Additionally, these two double-height spaces, which you can see I'm pointing to with my mouse, hopefully everyone on the presentation can see my mouse, there is a direct connection to this courtyard. So these areas are really going to be the flagship lifestyle spaces for the residents to enjoy on the AL side, and I will let Ben during his presentation explain the courtyards a little bit in more detail. Memory care programming, which is on this bar portion, is very, very similar to what was previously presented. We have consolidated the amenity spaces more centrally and allows us -- this allows us to, again, have this direct indoor-outdoor connection with the memory care amenity and outdoor courtyard, which we feel is incredibly important. Previously, the memory care courtyard was over out on West Street. We feel -- we're really excited about this. We feel like this is a big improvement, and again, Ben will speak to this a little bit more further in the presentation.
Can I just interrupt and ask you what the jockey club is?
Sure. So jockey club and great room are kind of a themed flagship. It's like a lounge. There's going to be a bar, place for people to gather with their families, you know, grab a quick bite, that kind of thing. Michael, if you want to expand on what a jockey club is to you, but to me, it's just an exciting, lively lounge space for your residents.
Susan spent some time in the various water holes of Washington, DC, and the -- one of the hotels, long before I ever met her, she would spend time and had a jockey club that was festooned with paraphernalia from the Washington, DC equestrian centers and the rest.
Okay. So there you go.
More information than you probably wanted, but I just needed an explanation of what the term meant.
There will not be horses here. Otherwise, the amenities are very similar. You have the pool, the fitness, things like that. Upstairs, you can see immediately these two white spaces right here. These are, or at least this one right here, is open to below. The one next one, the one next to it will have a vaulted ceiling, but the open-to-below area, you'll get to experience that from the library. There's going to be this really nice grand staircase connecting the first and second levels and the core amenity spaces for the residents, which is going to be a big improvement over what was previously proposed. Just that volume of space really helps keep things open and airy. We have a theater here, as well as a crafts and activity studio. The other key point besides amenities that I want to discuss is unit sizes. Now that we are primarily AL and there's no longer an IL component, the unit sizes have been able to grow substantially, and the average size is 830 with this Balfour proposal, which to me is a very typical apartment for standard market-rate apartments as opposed to just senior living apartments. So it's a really healthy size, whereas the LCB average was 622, which to me is more typical to an AL unit. These larger units will have full-size kitchens, so the residents will have access to a full suite of kitchen appliances, and they will also have their own private washer dryer in their unit. So for those who are healthy and active and have the ability to do so and desire to do so, they can do their own cooking if they wish. They can do their own laundry if they wish, but of course, those amenities are also provided on-site for those who want them. There's laundry service and obviously commercial kitchen and things like that.
Full stove and oven?
That's correct. Obviously, memory care does not have a full kitchen. They just have, you know, their sink and lock fridge and that kind of thing. Level three, there's not a lot specific to talk about. It's very similar to what was proposed before. We have our commercial kitchen and our main dining up here. We have private dining for family functions. We have a bistro, a little grab-and-go station, and then there's also plenty of spaces, you know, on this level and throughout for socialization, just kind of having a place to gather with friends in the community, with your family, in these seating areas that you find in the center of the hallway. Level four is the penthouse that we're adding, and the biggest change, I think, from the LCB plan to what we're proposing right now is the elimination of the amenity penthouse. So the impact to the street views and things like that will be less than the previous application. The penthouse that we are proposing has 11 units, each with their own individual terraces, very similar to what was proposed before, but the overall amassing impact has been reduced. This is a quick zoomed-in view of the elevations. This slide is very similar to what was presented before because the elevation treatments are very similar. Same materials are being proposed. There are some color changes just to provide some more contrast. And then I also wanted to mention the windows. Under the previous application, the existing windows were proposed to remain. As Julie mentioned earlier, we are going for LEED Gold Certified, so upgrading the windows is going to be very important. We'll be replacing them with casement windows that have the appearance of double hung, so you still get that mill vibe, and you're not really changing the character of the building so much, but you are getting a much higher performing window that you can't really get with a double hung. And we're proposing to change kind of the light pattern so that there's more light and and less obstruction of the windows. And in addition to the high energy performance, they will also be high STC rated. We're well aware that there's a train basically right on-site, and we want to make sure that the residents have a very acoustically sound, no pun intended, wall assembly with great-performing windows. We certainly don't want our residents complaining or being upset about the windows. We're very sensitive to that. We want to make sure that that's well addressed.
Will the windows open?
Of course. So I'm going to move through these next couple sides a little bit more quickly because they are so, so similar. In this elevation, it's practically identical, other than the removal of a couple of at-grade patios on Highland Ave. This is the Highland Ave elevation. The removal is just as a result of, you know, units shifting around with the redesign. These elevations are identical to what was proposed before, other than the replacement of the windows. Here, you can see the upgraded entry that I spoke about previously. So the existing overhang that's on-site is going to be removed and extended and replaced with this nice-looking, very glassy vestibule, which is going to upgrade from the entry sequence like I mentioned. And then you're also going to see... You can see at this lower elevation vest, some very large double-height windows that correspond to those two double-height spaces I spoke about earlier. Go ahead.
On the screen, the middle photo, the design feature towards the left, is that the entrance for memory care?
Great question. It is in the memory care wing, but it is not the entrance to the memory care. It's an AL direct entrance. You get... You come in, there's a stair and elevators that go direct to AL. The memory care entry, if they don't come through the main entry where the admin space is, there is a memory care entry on West Street.
So what is that design feature?
That design feature is existing. It's the port pusher as you go... Let me go back to the main plan. It's this guy right here.
Okay. And the entrance for assisted living... Oh, sorry. For assisted living would be farther south.
So assisted living is right through here. So if you come in, there's a stair that goes upstairs and an elevator that the AL residents would have free and clear access to. Memory care does not have access to those stairs or elevators.
So around the roundabout, that's no longer going to be the main entrance? Or that's not going to be the central?
This is the main entrance for the property, but if you are a resident and you're not going to the amenity spaces, you're going straight to your units, this might be a far more efficient way to get in. So there are two entries. This is dedicated to AL, and this is the main entry for the total property.
I'm sorry. Where is the memory care on that floor plan?
Right.
Where are those units?
Here, this is the dividing wall.
Right.
So there's controlled access from inside the building.
Yes.
So the main entry is likely to be used by family and... Well, family coming to visit is likely going to use the main entrance. This is controlled entry. And then there is also access to memory care on this elevation.
So that whole section is all memory care?
Correct.
But did you just say that the assisted living entry for the residence is...
Let me see if I can zoom in. That's going to help a lot. So do you see how this is cut off? And there's no access from this vestibule to this wing? It is only direct access straight upstairs.
I see. Okay.
It's going to... Because this building is so large, having only one entry for your AL residents is going to be really inconvenient. So we have two entries. There's your main entry where all the amenities are, and then this entry right here.
This is where the residents... So there are two entries for the assisted living residents?
Correct.
One is where the families would tend to greet, and the other is...
You're just out and about. You're coming and going.
And what I see here where it says studio and one bedroom and den on either side, that's all memory care? Those are all memory care units?
On level one, yes. So you come in from the driveway. Here's your access to go straight up if you are an AL resident. If you are a memory care resident and you cannot use this entrance, you are... There's just... It's not... That's not a secure entrance for you to use.
Sure.
Yes. And so all of these studios are memory care, correct?
The memory care units are all on the ground?
First floor. That's what I thought.
All on the floor, yes.
But I was unclear with how that layout was presented, but now I have clarity. So thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome. Okay. Let me get back to presentation mode. No, that is a great question. It is a little bit in-plan confusing because AL is in the memory care wing on the first floor only. So that's what that is. And so to pick up where I left off, we were talking about the upgraded windows. So these much larger, glassy, nice-looking windows, this is going to help foster that inside-outside connection that we feel is really important. And it's going to help differentiate visually between amenity spaces versus residential spaces. Whereas previously, all of the amenity spaces from the outside and from the inside were going to appear just the same as your own units. So we feel that this is a nice improvement. And it's also not going to be really visible for the street, is really, you know, for our residents to enjoy.
Because that's the side that faces the parking area?
Correct. That's the parking lot facing side. This is the proposed South Bell elevation. This is facing the other parking lot on the other side of the building, practically identical to what was proposed before. Again, some patios were moved around because the units moved around inside. And then I think these have been presented to you before, very quickly, just showing the difference between the two. You can barely see the penthouse from Highland Ave at all. And this is, you know, showing there is going to be a substantial investment in the landscaping, which Ben will talk about in a few moments. Again, another view from Highland Ave. Now that the amenity penthouse is gone, there's almost no visual access to this additional fourth floor. There's the penthouse from Mellon Street. And with that, that is the end of the architectural presentation. Before I turn it over to Ben, did you have other questions that I could answer?
I'll ask at this time, I guess, if Artie or Gene, if either of you have any questions at this point on the architectural before we move on to the next guest.
Yes, I do. I saw it on the plans, but it wasn't mentioned just now in the presentation that there is an entrance off Highland Avenue. Could that be shown?
That's true.
Okay. So I take it residents of the assisted living can enter from Highland Avenue if they wish to do so?
Yes. We don't anticipate that this would be a primary entrance, however, yes, it is available to them.
Okay. And I don't know if you're the one to ask about, because you are the operating officer, so perhaps you do know these questions. You mentioned that there will be full kitchens in each unit of the assisted living. And what will the basic charge include? Is the basic charge to live there, does it include meals or is that extra? And also use of amenities such as fitness and pool, is that included in the basic charge?
Let me address that. Yes, meals will be included and most amenities, except for special events like going to outside theater or musical event, will also be included.
So meals, you mean, three meals a day are included in the basic charge?
Julie, you want to...
That is correct. Residents will have access to three meals a day that are chef-prepared meals, and that's a regulatory requirement for an assisted living.
It is.
To come to the meal or not, but they will have access to three meals with open dining.
Well, being of Scottish descent, I know if I lived there and I was paying for the meals, I would go and eat every one. But I wouldn't be too happy about it.
Well, at the risk of presenting perhaps some conflicting information, my understanding was that the regulatory requirement is one meal a day and that the expectation was that we were going to be offering different meal plans. So the minimum that you are required in order to be licensed as a AL facility in Massachusetts is one meal. That will be included in the base price. You can pay more for more meals than one meal per day. That's my understanding of what the intention is. Is that correct?
Is that Michael speaking?
No, this is Evan Huber speaking.
But I believe I misspoke, and we can validate this, but there will be three meals prepared. I think under Massachusetts regulations, one may be required, but we can validate that. Colorado was different, but different states are different. We do not send the police out to enforce, you know, that somebody must attend every meal or they're in trouble.
But it does...
So it's similar to North Hill in that regard?
I'm not familiar enough with North Hill to speak to that.
Okay. I think based on what was presented, that's my comment so far.
So to be clear, the residents will have a full kitchen.
Correct.
And so if they choose to cook their own meals, they aren't paying for three meals a day if they don't want to.
They would be paying for one meal a day.
They could be paying for one meal a day and choose to make their own meals because they have full kitchens for the other two meals every day. But if they want to avail themselves of two meals a day or three meals a day, they can add to their basic charge.
That's correct.
In order to have that.
We can certainly confirm that to you in writing.
No, I think...
That's our intention.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Artie, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Evan. So just to clarify the differentiation between assisted living and independent living, to some degree, we're talking about that one meal per day. Is that a fair assessment, the difference if someone has assisted living versus independent living? That one meal being charged at this point?
No, that's... I would not agree with that, Artie. So the reason that it's important, one of the reasons why it's important and why Balfour has taken the approach of having all of these rooms be... All of the apartments be licensed as AL facilities is that allows Balfour to provide services to a resident in an AL-licensed unit, you know, healthcare and assistance of daily living, where they would not be able to do so if it was an IL unit. So if it was an IL unit and the resident of the IL unit needed care, they would have to bring that care in from outside. So one of the... This is what Balfour refers to as aging in place. If you are living in a unit that is licensed as assisted living, you may not need any assistance when you first move in. Hopefully, you won't. Or maybe one member of the couple, if it's a couple, needs it and the other does not. And so that care can be provided to you when you need it, either right away when you move in or when you eventually need it, without having to move from an independent living unit to an assisted living unit.
Okay. So let me just clarify the other direction. So you're saying legally, you are not even allowed... Is that what you... I just want to... So legally, you're not even... You're not allowed to even offer them services if it is an independent living unit? Is that what you're telling? Is that what you're saying? You're not even allowed to offer those services?
Well, Julie can speak to that probably better than I can. But my understanding is if you are licensed as an assisted living facility or those units which are licensed as assisted living, the operating entity, in this case, Balfour, can provide the sorts of services that a resident needs, you know, assistance with activities of daily living, for example. Balfour would not be licensed to provide that care to somebody living in an independent living unit. Many people live in independent living units and find themselves needing assistance. And what typically happens in that situation is they either move to an assisted living unit or they bring in care from the outside.
I would also add that couples, sometimes there are different health status. And if one of the members of the household needs more care in an independent living, they can't provide that. That means that couples may have to split up. In this setting, they can stay in that and one can receive the extra care and the other one does not.
Artie, I understand... Do you have any questions about the architectural and the site plan that was just presented? Because you've got other questions. We'll get to those questions, but I'm just mindful of time.
Let me just... Fairness. Okay. So I just... Okay. So I do have some questions related to architecture. Thank you, Evan. So I just want to be clear that... So you're just saying legally, you're not allowed to offer those same amenities to the independent living, like you do to the assisted living? Just want to clarify, that's what you're saying.
I wouldn't phrase it as not allowed. I would phrase it as we're not licensed to offer it in units that are not licensed as assisted living facility. So a unit could be an independent living unit, and in that unit, you are not licensed to provide services.
Okay. Just to clarify, I just wasn't 100% certain where... I mean, where is the entrance for the memory care? Is it the dual entrance of that where we could also entrance for assisted living plus the memory care does enter there as well? I just wasn't sure where the exact entrance is for the memory care.
Sure. So for those... I mean, a person living in memory care is not, you know, freely wandering in and out of this building, right?
Sure.
So the main entrance for the property, including for memory care, is here at this roundabout. There is also an entry on West Street. This is not the primary entrance.
For the memory care?
For the memory care, correct. There's no access to AL from the West Street entrance. It's memory care only.
Okay. Thank you. The other is, you're talking about the windows. I mean, I think it's valid that you're looking at gold standard. I love that, that you're doing that. You're talking about the windows would open. Now, what about the windows in the memory care units? Did they all open the same way? And if they all open the same way, does that mean it offers the same accessibility out of the building?
So that's a great question. I don't know the precise answer to that, but my expectation is that the windows are opened in a very limited fashion in the memory care units. They don't have wide-open, you know, they can't crawl through their windows. My expectation is that it's a four-inch stop limit to the window openings. Julie, I see you nodding. Do you have any more to add on what is typical for a Balfour property?
Yeah, that's exactly what we do. We typically in Colorado do a three-inch stopper, and it limit the window to only open three inches, but we would look at the life safety regulations in the state of Massachusetts.
But there would be a difference between the opening in the memory care, how much they open, and the assisted living, how much they open? It would be different?
Correct. So for a standard unit in assisted living, you would be able to open the window a typical amount or you would be able to limit it if that person chose to limit it or if for some reason that was appropriate for that resident. So yes, you would be able to have a more open window in an assisted living unit.
Thank you. Just the only other thing is, you're talking about gold standard. Were you putting solar on this building?
That is not in the scope at this point. We have gone through our scorecard for LEED for the project, and we're actually in great shape. We're a little bit over the limit for LEED with our proposed scope of work, but no, at this point, solar is not going to be included.
Well, I understand. I understand the measurement factors, getting to the... If the roof space allows it, I would be ashamed not to have a roof.
I think that the existing structure would probably need to be reinforced substantially in order to support that, which would be a pretty big added cost, but it is something I can keep in mind. I do appreciate the comment.
Thank you. That's all I have for now, Evan. Thank you.
Thanks, Artie. At this time, I'd ask Ben to continue, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, Ben LaFrance with HAWK Design, we're the landscape architects on this project. We were part of the previous application as well. By and large, the plant palette for the property remains consistent with the previous application. The approved plant species and proposed sizes all remain very consistent with that There have been small adjustments made throughout the property to accommodate some of the architectural changes that you just heard about, as well as some of the exterior resident amenities that we were able to relocate based upon some of the interior programming of the building. that we were able to relocate based upon some of the interior programming of the building. So along the Highland Avenue facade, in the southern parking area facade, very minor adjustments were made to the locations of plantings. Some areas we had to add or fill in some plantings based upon the resident patios, changing along there, as well as some of the refinements to the door and window locations. But a very lush setting along Highland Avenue. We have street trees located along the building, as well as lower ground plane plantings, creating a setting for the building, reducing the scale of the building, and also creating interest for not only our residents, but the town as well. At the north end of the building, probably one of the more noticeable changes to the plan has been the removal of the memory care courtyard along West Street. That's been relocated further inbound in the site, adjacent to the library and dining area for memory care residents. If you recall, that memory care courtyard had an eight-foot-high fence around it. So that's been relocated, allowing us to create a much better landscape treatment along West Street. We're going to continue the fence. There's an existing black metal fence along there, wrought iron style fence with brick columns. Those are going to remain. And we've added or continued the landscape treatment that we previously had along there. Also, we have a connection walkway into our site and a small seating terrace out there for our residents to enjoy. Certainly, the assisted living residents could go out there and sit, have a cup of coffee, and watch the traffic go by, things like that.
So that's at the corner. What you're referring to on West Street is accessible in particular for assisted living residents and not memory care. Memory care is exterior access and amenity space is in the middle of the area?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So moving south along the building facade there, no changes to the plantings have been made or the sidewalks along there. If you recall, we have a meandering pathway inbound from the parking area that kind of winds through there, a few seating areas along the way for our residents to enjoy. And then we get to the area south of the assisted living entrance that we just talked about. That is where our memory care courtyard has been relocated to. That's adjacent to the interior library and dining area of the residence. For the memory care, we have a walkway that circulates and connects both of the entrances to the building there. Along the way, we have water feature, several seating areas, as well as a shade pergola to shade the strong summer sun. The courtyard's also, as was in the previous application, surrounded by an eight-foot-high board fence. It would be a cedar fence, a very natural-looking fence. That's part of the requirements of the memory care facility to enclose that space. We have plantings that would surround that, so it would really create a nice buffer of the fence there, and all non-toxic plants within there to meet the guidelines of a memory care courtyard. Moving south of the service area, we have an extension of the jockey club to an exterior courtyard there. Nice place to extend the gatherings and comings and goings in the jockey club. The centerpiece of that will be a fireplace that will extend the seasons into the shoulder seasons, create a nice ambiance in the early evenings. That fireplace is flanked by two shade structures, once again, creating a seating area that will shade people from a strong summer sun. Multiple areas in there that will act as seating, small conversation areas for our residents to go outside and enjoy the fresh air. In the circle in front of the main entrance to the building, the centerpiece of that will be a commissioned sculpture piece. We really see that as a focal point as you drive in and down the main entrance there that will really pull one in their vehicle to that entrance, sort of signifying that there is something important down there. We've also created a connection to that circle by continuing the paving across the drop-off area and out to that space. There's a walkway that surrounds that area with several options for benches there for residents to go out and sit and enjoy, look at the sculpture, and see the cars coming and going in there. Next slide, please. For the lighting plan, we are proposing all new fixtures on the property. Due to the efficiency of this newly proposed site light fixture that we have, we were able to reduce the number of lights from 31 on the previous application to 26 on this current application. Proposed lights will be an LED fixture. They're going to be fully dark sky compliant with backside shields where appropriate to eliminate any light spillage off the property. Lights have been reduced in height from 16 to 14 feet, so they bring down a little bit in height, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly height to those. And additionally, light bollards on the property have been reduced in quantity from 28 to 15, largely due to the reconfiguration of the resident courtyards that we just reviewed. So with that, I could certainly answer any questions, or I can turn it over to traffic, Erin at the other end there.
Good evening. Erin Fredette with McMahon Associates, traffic engineers on the project. In the interest of time, I'll give a very brief overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions that come up. So for the proposed Balfour project, we conducted an updated traffic assessment, which primarily focused on a comparison between the proposed Balfour project to the previous LCB project. If you recall, as part of the LCB project, we performed a full traffic impact study looking at the adjacent roadways and intersections to the project site, as well as the project site driveways. And we really wanted to focus on the comparison because the findings of that traffic impact study indicated that there was no projected impact associated with the proposed LCB project. And so one of the things that we focused on as part of the assessment was looking at trip generation, which is how many trips would be generated by the proposed Balfour project. And based on the updated build program of all assisted living, the trip generation during the weekday morning peak hour and the weekday afternoon peak hours was shown to be nearly identical. So we're looking at about 30 trips during the weekday morning peak hour and about 45 trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour. We also looked at parking for the proposed Balfour project. The proposed project would provide 145 onsite parking spaces. We reviewed peak period parking demand utilizing the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation Manual, which is industry standard, and that projection indicated a peak demand of about 60 parking spaces, so the 145 should well serve that peak demand. And additionally, there would be no changes to the site access from either the LCB senior living proposal or from really the existing access. And so based on the previous findings of the traffic impact study that indicated no significant impact to the adjacent roadways and the very comparable trip generating characteristics, the ability to serve projected parking demand onsite, and no additional changes to the proposed site driveways, the proposed Balfour at Needham Project would also follow the same findings and not be expected to have a significant impact on the adjacent roadways and intersections. So unless there's questions, I can turn it over to David Kelly.
It was not, because we're trying to keep our presentation within certain time limits, which we've exceeded. We're not planning to have Mr. Kelly make any sort of a presentation. Our expectation is that with certain limited exceptions that I referred to about the, you know, the parking stalls in the underground, in the enclosed garage, you know, we meet, as you're looking at these zoning tables, we meet zoning compliance with virtually every requirement. And so Mr. Kelly is available if you have engineering or site plan questions, but that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. We will get to an opportunity for the public to participate. Before that, there'll be an opportunity for planning board members. But before we get to the planning board members, additional comments and questions at this time for the record, I would like to note the following comments on this application from town staff and departments. Artie, I see your hand is up, but I will get to you after. We've received an email from the building commissioner, Dave Roach, who said, dated July 15th, that he is satisfied with the current plan. We have a letter from our town engineer, Tom Rider, dated August 10th, recommending stormwater recharge onsite in order to minimize future disruption. He acknowledges that it's not required, yet he suggests that to do it would be substantially advantageous. And I'll come back to that in a moment with our questions. We have an email dated from August 10th from Assistant Public Health Director Tara Gurges, who notes that obviously a food permit will be required, a pool permit will be required, sufficient, she's also looking for a sufficient space in the parking lot for a trash dumpster, a separate recycling dumpster, and also a containment program for waste oil and grease, a pest control service contract to be in place during construction, in addition to post-construction, in addition to a potential requirement for wildlife pest services contract during and post-construction. We have an email dated August 11th from our new fire chief.
Excuse me. May I interrupt there because I have a comment about Tara Gurges' email?
Sure.
It's kind of a question.
Yep.
She also stated that the dumpsters must be placed in an easily accessible area close to the main kitchen areas. And I noted that the kitchens are on the third floor. And so I was wondering if you addressed that issue with the health department about the fact that they want to see, they want to see the dumpsters, they want to see the dumpsters close to the kitchen, and yet I think that's a little bit difficult if the kitchen's on the third floor.
That's a great point. So let me address that. Or do you want to continue, or should I address that now?
You can address it now briefly.
Briefly.
Otherwise, just, you know, it's a note that will have to be addressed. I'm sure, Evans, you've seen all of the town public comments. And, you know, we're looking to address those in addition, you know, to the comment that Tom Rider had made, but.
So there is a service elevator here that is not intended primarily for resident use. This is for kitchen staff and things like this. Here's your service for the memory care dining. As you can see, it leads right out to the dumpster. And then if you go up, pardon me. You can see this commercial kitchen has direct access to this elevator, which leads you right to the dumpsters on the first floor.
And the residents don't have access to that elevator?
Correct.
And have you discussed this with Ms. Gurges?
We have not had direct conversations, no, but I do feel that this is the closest connection we could possibly achieve.
I would like to see something from Ms. Gurges indicating that she's okay with this.
Certainly, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. We have an email dated August 11th from our new fire chief, Tom Conroy, who is satisfied. We have an email on August the 12th from Police Chief Schlittler, who has no issues. We also have a memo dated June 21st from the Design Review Board, having acknowledged the changes made from the previous application and the previous program to the current program. And they have no further issues. I have a couple of comments and questions. I want to make a note that you will have an opportunity to speak with our public health department to ensure, as my colleague Paul Alpert has said, an opportunity to satisfy her comment with access to the dumpster, in addition to her other comments about the placement of the dumpsters, both dumpsters, and the containment program for grease oil, for waste oil and grease. And also with your engineer to, you know, to discuss with Tom Rider, you know, the opportunity that we have now, while the building will be under renovation, to address onsite stormwater management or discharge, you know, as opposed to addressing that in the future. For Mr. Sean Brun, you had mentioned that, I think this program, if I recall, has 127 assisted living units. I think that's roughly the program. And you're intending, you're not only intending to admit seniors that require assistance with living, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you therefore will admit some residents who are able to live entirely independently, regardless of the fact whether they're Scottish or from any other nationality, have the ability to, you know, pay for one meal a day that they're otherwise fully independent?
Yes, that's correct. And it's what we've done in several of our other buildings that.
Offered the three programs.
That's right.
So do you have any idea how many of those, of the 127 units, that you kind of hold as available for residents that are able to live fully independently?
I'm not sure that we hold them available, but I believe that in, Julie, and you can help, I think we're somewhere around 30% in our, for instance, our Longmont, who are living independently.
Yeah, in Longmont, past time, there's 68 living apartments, and 24 of the residents are currently considered independent, meaning they have no care needs at all.
That's helpful. So if of 127 units, 30% is roughly somewhere less than 45, do we have an ability here to accommodate some affordability? 12 and a half percent of 45 units would be more than, 10% would be five, so six units to hold as affordable?
Well, that has not been our proposal. People's needs change. The average age around the United States of folks living in independent living versus those living in assisted living is roughly 18 months. So the length of stay will determine if they are with us for the rest of their lives, which is certainly our intention, that they will need that care over time. And rather than have to move to a different location, we think the advantage of this program where it's all licensed assisted, they can remain there and therefore, one unit, one year might be somebody living independently. The next year, that may change and they would need more care. They will not have to move. And the same thing, of course, happens to.
I wasn't thinking of actually of requiring moving of a resident. And I understand that you have that license, but if there's an opportunity, I do wonder, and I want to give some thought to, if you're dealing with somewhere around 30%, and there's an opportunity to make affordable within the existing licensed structure where they're not paying extra for additional assisted living services, that there might be some accommodation for those six units or so.
I think the problem of what you're suggesting is that, this, I think, is a problem inherent in the requirement that so independent living units have an affordable component, is that at the time when the resident of that unit, whether it's an independent living unit or a, is that me?
I don't know. But the feedback ghost is gone, so please continue.
Whether it's a resident of an affordable, capital A, affordable unit, or a resident of an assisted living unit that doesn't require any additional care, is that the day will come when that person needs care. And then if the person, you know, can't afford that care because they're in there on an affordable basis, and now what do you do? Do you ask them to leave? So it's a very difficult reality to address the fact that virtually everyone who lives in this building is going to need care at some point.
I understand that, and I'm not suggesting that they have to move out, or that, what I am suggesting is that there may be an opportunity, that's just something that I want to consider, and I'm going to, you know, open this up for my other colleagues. and I'm going to, you know, open this up for my other colleagues, but it's just something to consider, that until such a time that someone requires additional services, for which they pay obviously an additional fee, that they may have, that they may have a benefit of some affordability program.
Well, I guess I would respond to that by saying, far and away, the greatest motivation on our part to make a contribution of the size that we have agreed in principle.
I understand.
Is as a donation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, in recognition of the fact that this assisted living is not required by the bylaw to have affordable, and there are difficulties in implementing an affordable program for assisted living, and so, because, you know, assisted living can cover a range of levels of care and therefore a range of costs, and so, you know, it's not an inconsequential amount of money, $1.9 million, you know, that was intended to, you know, the town can use that money however they want, and if they want to use it to provide some sort of a subsidy to people that they determine are eligible in some way, that's certainly town's prerogative, but it was not our intention to do both, for sure.
I understand it wasn't our intention to do both, I'm just trying to identify other, you know, other opportunities here, which is the purpose for the question, but we can, you know.
I can speak a little bit to Walthour.
Please. I'm going to ask you to come to the microphones, so people at home can hear you as well, and if you could say your name, please.
My name is Patrick Bennett, I'm with Walthour. I think one of the, just to help provide some context into this question, is the 30%, I think you alluded to it as well, it's going to be fluctuating, right, if people, it could be 50% at the beginning, it might move to 20% at some point, because once people will require care, that we, it's hard to predict when they will require care, the way this works, we typically, I think as a company, can tell you, we don't, there's barely any profit margin for care, that's like not the way we operate, it's not the way we want to operate, so the moment that we start providing a lot of care to an affordable, to a resident that is in an affordable housing unit, what will happen is that the impact of having an affordable housing unit on site, someone requires a lot of care, is financially very difficult to sustain.
I'm not suggesting that the affordable unit, or the, I'm not suggesting, rather, that the assisted component necessarily becomes affordable.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not suggesting that, I am suggesting is that if there are, if there are up to 45 residents, 45 units of 127 units, that are, for a period of time, generally speaking, not requiring additional assisted living services, they are cooking at least two of the three of their own meals themselves, walking, driving, participating independently in, you know, in society.
Mr. Chairman, may I jump in here, because I think you're getting into an area that I'm getting confused about, and I have some questions that maybe might provide some clarity
Okay.
on this issue. Can you explain how the fee structure works, so that, for example, are all of the assisted living units paying the same fee, I recognize the fact that the fee will change based on how many meals you have, but are you charging different fees based on whether or not they need assisted living care?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the assisted living care is available, and if you need it, you pay extra?
Correct, and typically, we have folks at zero, one, two, and three levels of care, which are in fact calculated based on points and the needs that they may have.
The other thing, Paul, is that units are not all the same size, so.
No, 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 I understand that, I'm just trying to understand as, because the distinction that's being made here is a person or a couple who needs no care versus a person or a couple that needs care, and Adam's trying to get to an affordable, an affordable unit potential, where the affordability clearly then, then depends upon the level of care that the people need, I mean, you know, that's, that changes the dynamic. The other thing that I want to mention, for what this is worth, Mr. Chairman, part of the issue of our bylaw requiring affordable units is because we want to stay below the threshold for 40B, and I'm thinking, without looking it up, I'm thinking that we can have, we can require, or we can ask the applicant to agree to having some sort of subsidy or affordability for certain residents, but because they're not technically independent living units, I don't think that those affordable units would help us in terms of being part of the affordable units in town that would go to our maintaining 10% affordable units.
That's right, that's right. Or put, the other side of that same coin is, that's the reason that there is no requirement in the bylaw for affordability component of assisted living, because assisted living does not count against the housing stock, which is the denominator of the ratio that has to be.
Which is what I'm trying to say.
Which, I understand that, I just, I see there's a period of time, I see that there are, there's a potential for five units, and I think, Lee, in our underlying zoning, we were talking about, there might be an opportunity for nine units, I can't remember.
Well, Adam, just to correct your math, by the way, and this, this is not, we just fundamentally don't agree with what you're proposing, but even if it was 30% of 120, 30% of 120 is not 45, it's about 37.
Right.
And so.
The 12 and a half percent of that is 4.8, which is roughly rounded up to five units. I hear what you're saying, I recognize that, I recognize that this is not something that we have previously discussed, I recognize that this is new to you, I recognize that also, that there is a period of time, that there are, that the operation through its assisted living facility, I think we mentioned in Colorado, has roughly 30% of those units are not held, that was incorrect terminology, but those units are effectively licensed as affordable units, and yet, sorry, I apologize, licensed as assisted living units, and yet have residents, bless you, that are not, that are living independently, and for that, if we can capture an opportunity where there is that period of time, that might be something that, you know, that might be something of interest. However, I, you know, I am mindful of the time, I was trying to wrap this up, bless you again, for, roughly for 8:30, because we have another scheduled hearing that was supposed to commence at 7:45, and we haven't yet had a chance to get to other colleagues. So at this time, what I'm going to do is ask Paul if you have any other comments or questions.
Just on the thought that we've had, I have seen business models, which we don't have here, but I have seen business models where part of the business model is to have some sort of subsidy for people who cannot afford the full freight.
Right.
For what it costs, and I'm just going to comment that it's clearly not the business model here, so we're asking them to substantially change their business model to have some sort of affordability there, but also that they're negotiating with the select board right now on this particular issue, I mean, if they're making a substantial contribution to the town that goes to the town's Affordable Housing Trust, that's, that's the purpose of their negotiations, is to, is to address that issue.
I, I.
And I'm still waiting to see, you know, I look forward to seeing a final agreement.
Yes, yeah, there's, you know, principals reach agreement, and then the lawyers get involved and muck things up with verbiage, so.
Yes, they do.
So, says two lawyers in the room.
Yes, we do.
I, I'm mindful of that, I wanted to raise it, because as we're having the presentation, I see that there is an opportunity, I wasn't sure if that opportunity had been explored, I want to explore it, that's just me, but Paul, do you have, separate from that, do you have other comments, questions or comments? Artie Crocker, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, a couple, couple of questions, I'll get to my first one last, related to what you're talking about, Mr. Chair, just regarding the lights in the parking lot, obviously, they're, you know, doctor's, I can find, what is being done to shroud the lights for actually entering the building, I know there's likely going to be something done to shroud the lights, not too much like exit the property, what's being done to shroud them so minimize how much light actually enters the building, I ask because there are people living in this building, so what has been done to mitigate that or minimize that?
Sure, so.
Do you have a profile of the lights, of the lights, if you have some, anything?
So here, you see, we've located a predominance of the lighting for the parking lot along the exterior edge of the parking lot there, so furthest away from most of the residents. You can see the photometry here of the lights is very low as it gets towards the building. Additionally, bringing them down in height from 16 to 14 feet will get them, get down in relation to the resident units, so looking out of the second story windows, they'll be lower relative to the sill height, so that will also help mitigate some of the lighting that might spill in, and then additionally, obviously, window treatments and things like that will, will even impact that more and reduce that light.
Okay, thank you. The other question is, what allowance is, has been made, my apologies if I missed it, what allowance has been made for residents to have cars, and how many cars, how many units have cars and so forth, is there any, is there any allowance for that?
Well, the, would you like to speak to the?
I mean, well, from our perspective, we tend to use industry standard data, so I don't want to speak to what Balfour made.
Well, I can say on the part of Balfour that residents are welcome to have cars, we have a very robust transportation program with essentially car and driver who will take people, as well as the proverbial bus that will take outings, typically, we have approximately, somewhere between a quarter and a half of our residents bring cars, and once they realize the benefits of the transportation program that Balfour provides, half of those people will either never use them or get rid of their cars, so it's a very small percentage to using it.
But are they, is every AL resident allowed to have a car, one car, let's say?
Yes.
And if so, are they charged extra for cars in the parking lot?
At this point, I'm not sure we're planning on a charge for the parking, but we have not refined all of the fees for the building yet, so I think I have to say, I don't know. They certainly are allowed to bring a car if they want to, except for the memory care folks that we helped, you know.
Yeah, of course, yeah, of course for that one. Getting into the gold cert standard, because I know with gold certification, there's a certain, you know, rainwater, you know, gray water reuse, I don't remember right now about the stormwater mitigation reuse, could you talk about that, could you talk about what the plans are for that, there's rainwater, stormwater, gray water reuse?
Do we have clues from Kelly Engineering on the?
Oh, we do.
David, what's on? Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Good evening. So firstly, with regards to gray water, there has been no discussion, but there really isn't an appropriate way to deal with that here, there really isn't gray water from a plumbing separation system, I'm not sure the town even allows it. Relative to storm drainage, we did just receive or just heard about the comment from Tom Rider this evening regarding suggestions for more recharge on site, I want to note, and I think in Tom Rider's letter, which we haven't seen yet, he did note that the project does comply with their stormwater regulations, and it does, because there isn't an increase in paved area on site. We will look based on that comment with opportunities to enhance recharge on the site, for sure, but it's not that easy here, because it's an existing storm drain system that ultimately drains across the railroad to the west, but based on that comment, we certainly will look at it, you know, prior to the next hearing.
What about, what about rain, rainy water that's hitting the roof surface, and using that, using that rainwater as a holding tank, watering the plants, I mean, is there anything being done with the rainwater itself on the property, on the structure?
There's no proposal for cisterns here, it would probably be difficult, there's a lot, there's very little room to accommodate cisterns, our experience with cisterns, which I think is what you're talking about, is that, is that they store water when you don't need it, and they don't store it when you do need it, you know, for instance, the last six weeks, obviously, we had very little rain, which is really when you want the cistern, and those cisterns are empty, so we've looked at them on many, many projects, and it really is not, it really doesn't make sense, again, to the extent that the board feels we ought to look at it more, we certainly can, we don't have a lot of room, the volume of water needed to be stored in order to, in order to be available when, when, when you have times without rainfall is very large and becomes really uneconomical, presumably.
I mean, I'm just referring to even just using for, you know, watering plants and such as that, and so, so at this point, there's absolutely no, no reuse of any rainwater, stormwater, there's nothing, this is going to be gold cert, there's nothing, no reuse of any rainwater, we're all going, it's a huge roof surface, but there's nothing.
It's a reuse of an existing site, and that's why I don't believe under the lead requirements is a requirement for it here, and there is no increase in our purpose that we noted.
Agreed.
But again, we, you know, we'll take the comment and certainly take a look at it.
Okay, I won't talk about the complaints right now, Mr. Chair, I just want to comment that I agree with what you're looking at, I mean, we have a problem here looking for a solution, and the problem being is, you know, what we saw as a town earlier, what we approved online, and that was what we're seeing now, and so, again, we have a problem looking for a solution, and so, Paul, you also mentioned that you had, you had seen some, some situations where they did provide some type of subsidy, I'll use the word affordable housing aspect, affordable aspect of it, but something, so again, we have a problem looking for a solution, so I agree with bringing it up as a topic, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I see Jean McKnight has her hand up, so Jean?
Yes, I realize, we've got to move on quickly, I want to give an idea of what my comments are, but perhaps they won't be answered at this meeting. First of all, the assertion that assisted living is a use that's allowed by right in the underlying district, I completely disagree with, the word that is in our zoning bylaw is a convalescent facility is allowed by right, or a skilled nursing facility, and I think that word is one that perhaps was used in the past, and in some places is used in the present to describe a rehab facility for people, you know, coming out of the hospital, that's what was proposed, yeah.
Jean, Jean, let me, Jean, let me just give you a 30-second response, so you can maybe think about this between now and the next meeting, the reason that we say that it's allowed as a right is that if you look in the definition of assisted living in the bylaw, the definition of assisted living is a tight, it's a subset of convalescent or nursing home under the town bylaws, so convalescent or nursing home as defined in the town bylaws includes assisted living.
I'll review that again, but I did read it, and that's the conclusion I came to, but I will read it again.
Well, again, the only other thing I would say is, we don't want to. Well, again, the only other thing I would say is, we don't want to debate this.
I understand you don't want to debate it. She's raised a comment. She's not looking to engage. She just wants to raise her comments. In the interest of time, I'd like the vice chair to continue. Jean?
Yes. I note that the traffic report indicates that the level of accidents at the intersection of West Street and Hillside Avenue is very high. It's higher than the state average for unsignaled intersections. And I note that the town is expected to address that with improvements. I'd like to find out what the timing is on those improvements and whether the amount to be contributed to the town should be boosted in some way towards the cost of that. Although I do understand the traffic impact report says this facility will not have a greater impact than the previous use of the building and than the previous proposed use of the building. So I don't want to get into arguing that, but I throw it out. I guess I live on Hillside Avenue, and I know how bad that intersection is, how dangerous it feels when you try to cross it as a pedestrian. On the fiscal impact report, one thing, it was said that perhaps, I don't know if this was in a fiscal impact report, I think it might have been, that 35% to 40% of the residents are expected to be people who were formerly residing in their own homes in Needham. And I think one impact, it may be a welcome impact because it may be some of these are the smaller homes that might be sold to younger families, creating some opportunities for people to move into our community, you know, even our own children, you know. But of course, when families with children move into Needham, there is an impact on the schools. So I think at least some consideration should be given to the fact that Needham families selling their house, moving here will create opportunities for families to move to our town with a school impact. Then I very much appreciate the discussion we've had with the cost structure. I'm really focused, I've said right along at a prior meeting before the application was filed, that I prefer to see affordable units on site rather than a compensation payment. And if there is a possibility of structuring five units, not the original nine, but five units based on the formulas we were discussing, and I point out too, that five units is approximately half of the units of the penthouse units. And we don't have to allow that extra story on this building. But if the extra story is there, there's nine extra units, five is about half of that to be affordable. And with regard to that, you know, our nation is moving, and our state is moving toward the idea, and I think funding and programs will eventually come along to maintain people, to maintain people who have assisted living needs in their own home. So if you have somebody living in a unit, you would have to pay extra for the services, can't that person provide those services through some other program and get them for themselves? So they'd be all set living there and continuing to live there. I think that's definitely a possibility for the future. Another thing on landscaping details, I reviewed the plans very carefully, but I couldn't find a legend that tells me, you know, that the plans show some plants, some trees is larger and some is smaller, and some is pink. But if there's a, one of the plans that actually helps me know what those plants are.
Jean?
Or later, we continue the hearing and we can talk about that later.
Jean, I'm just going to, I'm just going to mention that Ben has, Ben might have an answer quick for you.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. McKnight, that's shown on sheet LD1, the plant schedule and planting details in the landscape.
Oh, okay. LD is in David 1.
That's correct.
All right, I'll look at that. Thank you.
There's a plant schedule that shows quantities and proposed size.
Okay, I somehow missed it. I noted this enhanced stormwater discharge that was asked for. Yes, so I want to say also that I'm very pleased that our design review board an opportunity to review this, and it is satisfied with the plantings, the lighting, and also especially the new arrangement for fencing at the corner of West Street and Highland. I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see that design review board is satisfied with. All right, those are my comments and questions, and maybe addressed further later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jean. I'd like to note for the record that we have received three written comments from the public on this subject. We received an email from Andrew Hutland on August 9th expressing a preference for independent living units so such residents could make active use of, in particular, public transportation in comparison to a program that would, that's exclusively assisted living and memory care only units who may have a tendency of not utilizing the immediate area amenities to the same level. We received an email on August the 12th from the Board of Directors of the Village Club in the, almost across the street, in a close proximity of 100 West Street in support of the application. We've also received a note from resident Joe Abruzis, who's a town meeting member of 30 Bridle Trail dated August 8th. This note was also sent and addressed to the select board, who was opposing the change in program and at the time, the then draft memorandum of understanding between the town and the applicant. Ordinarily, at this time, I would open the hearing up to the public for public comment. However, I note the time, we're well past, we're almost at 8:45. Our second hearing was scheduled for 7:45 this evening. So what I would like to do-
Mr. Chair, I'm not, I'm-
Artie, Artie, I'll come to you in a moment, okay?
The public-
Artie, 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 I'm going to come to you, I'm going to come to you in a minute, please. Alex, can you put up on the screen the number of, the number of members of the public, so we can see who has their hand up? So we have, it's all filtering in now. I'd like us to take a note of, are you able to enlarge that so you can do a screen grab?
Well, I have a screen grab that I can see.
Okay, what's that?
The woman is standing over here.
I believe that she's with the applicant. So are we able to take a screen grab or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. So.
Mr. Chair, we have to allow the public to comment. We have to, we have to allow the public to comment. They've been waiting a long time. And the presentation, the presentation went on quite a long time. I understand we have some, we have some comments there, but it went quite a long time, much over the time period.
Artie, I understand that. I'm not denying the public an opportunity to speak. I hear what you're saying. And yet, if we have a motion to continue the hearing, then we can continue at that point and start, and start with, start with public comment unless we start with addressing some of the, the next hearing, some of the answers, some of the specific questions that may have come up. But otherwise, at this point, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing to September 20th at 7:45.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
I just, I totally disagree. I think we should at least have 15 minutes of public comment. Just at least 15 minutes of public comment. And I understand we're running along. I get that. I appreciate that. But they've been here for a long time, listening to them for a long time now. We should at least allow 15 minutes of public comment, and then continue it, then continue the additional public comment. It is not, it is not fair that all these people are here at this point expecting to have public comment and they're having none. That's not right. We should at least have 15 minutes of public comment. We can keep things brief and go that way, and then continue more later on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you like a response?
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
I think the public, it's not a waste of time by any means for the public to tune in to this meeting and to hear the presentation, and also to hear the planning board's comments and questions. And I think it's, we have to be fair to the other applicant who's waiting to present tonight. And I think we want to make sure we set aside a substantial amount of time at the September 20th meeting to hear the public here on this.
No, no, I'm saying it was a waste of time. I'm saying it's not fair for the public to be here for this long. We should at least allow 15 minutes, at least 15 minutes.
Artie, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to continue to waste further time talking about how much time we have. Can you, Alex, can you scroll down a little bit so we can see how many more members we have with their hands up, our participants? Is it, is it seven at the top? There's seven? Okay, so Paul, would you like to withdraw your motion? Or now that we have a second, we actually have to come to the vote?
I think we should, we should have a vote. But don't ask me first.
You're alphabetically, you're in alphabetical order. I think, I think what I, you know what, I think procedurally, we have to go forward with the vote, and I think I know how this is going to go. So I asked my colleagues to-
I just want to comment that if there's anybody who wants to comment, who feels that they can't be here on September 20th.
Right.
Please give us your comments in writing. They will be read into the record. They will be part of the record. You don't need to verbally make your comments. I understand people like to do that, but.
And that email address they can submit their written comments is planning@needhamma.gov. Needham, rather, planning@needhamma.gov. I appreciate that. I'm going to call the roll. I am going to start with you. It's perfectly fine. Paul Alpert.
So the motion is to continue, and I'm going to vote aye.
You're going to vote aye?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Artie Crocker?
No.
Natasha Spada is not with us this evening, so Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Vote aye. And the chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We are continuing the hearing to September this 20th at 7:45. Lee, is that the correct date and time? Very good. Not how the vote I was expecting to go, but nevertheless, that's where we are. I do appreciate that people have participated tonight, that they have, that they have observed tonight, that they're participating in the process. I apologize that we have run out of time this evening to get to the public comment. We do look forward to picking this up at, on September 20th for public comment. We thank the applicant for coming this evening, for being here, for all of the people on the applicant's team. Thank you very much. Very good.
Mr. Chair, may I ask for a five-minute break?
Yes. We stand in recess for five minutes. We are back from recess. I now call to order our hearing that was originally scheduled for 7:45 for an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 2012-04 with respect to an application from Needham Bank to modify existing mezzanine space and drive through bank operations at 1063 Great Plain Avenue. May I please have a motion to waive the notice of hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the reading of the notice.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I come to the vote in alphabetical order. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. We apologize for keeping Needham Bank and your participants waiting for so long, and we are grateful for your patience. Thank you very much. We welcome you to come on up. And who would like to lead off our presentation?
I'll lead off.
Okay.
So Derek Redgate, civil engineer with High Point Engineering. Jim White, official title.
I'm the chief administrative officer at Needham Bank.
At the bank, okay.
And so I think how we'd like to, we have some folks on Zoom.
Yeah, I just want to make, I just also want to make sure for the record that, that we also have Derek. Is he participating remotely?
That's me.
That's you. You're in person.
Derek Redgate.
All right, very good. I appreciate that. Thank you, Derek. And Peter, Attorney Zaka, is he?
He's on Zoom.
Zoom?
I'm in, I'm Zoomed in. Thank you.
There he is.
Very good. Thank you very much. And Margaret Watson, is she participating tonight?
She's Zooming. She's there.
She was here, and I thought maybe she was over, and I'm sorry, she disappeared entirely.
So we'll give her another moment. And then Ronald Quicaro?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, there you are. All right, very good. So we'll wait. Alex, if you see Margaret populate, if you could bring her over with privileges, that would be helpful. And then in the meantime, oh, someone else.
Can I just double check? I just sent Alexandra a presentation for reference if necessary. Did you receive that, Alexandra?
She's just checking her email now.
Okay.
We, Ron, we spoke in between, and she has the ability to pull up our original application. So I think that should do the same thing.
Right, thanks.
Next time, if you want me to participate in the presentation, please, please.
Yes.
Please let go of us.
Live and learn.
Understood. And good point. So.
I think we'd like to have Mr. Zaka go first.
Okay.
For our presentation, and then follow up with myself, the civil engineer, mainly for site circulation, which seems to be the crux of this project, and then Ron for any architectural questions.
Okay, so we'll give Alex a minute to, very close, there's the application. So this is what participants at home are seeing, correct?
Yep. So if you scroll down to the plan, that's, I think it's C100, it should say layout and materials, that's probably the best one.
That's where she's at already.
Yeah. Sorry, it's C200.
C200.
Yeah.
We're at C100. Our system takes a moment to reload.
So that, that's probably the best plan to keep up on the screen. I don't know if it's possible to toggle between that one and the color PDF which matches the board that I have here. Okay. So we could keep that one up and, oh, I'm sorry. I'm saying, do you have the ability to mainly use this plan, but then toggle back and forth between this one and the colored one that I emailed you, which matches this one up on the board? on the board?
What do you mean for me?
Yes.
What do you mean for me?
Oh, this, this colored plan up on the screen.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were just going to tell me my...
Great, perfect, thank you. Okay.
And then you wanted to start with Attorney Zaka, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Attorney Zaka, you have the con.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, I'm going to give a very brief and quick overview amongst the talking tonight will be done by Derek and possibly Ron. Um, property, of course, in front of you is 1063 Great Plain Avenue, the Needham Bank property, which is about, currently has about 45,000 square feet of land occupied by about a, just shy of about 34,580 square foot building as well as a freestanding drive-up ATM. What we're proposing this evening, as you'll see, is to increase floor area on the site by under 1,700, just shy of 1,700 square feet, which consists of an existing, uh, taking existing mezzanine within the building and converted, converting that to executive offices of about 1,365 square feet. And adding an existing drive-up freestanding automatic teller machine that's there now will be removed and we'll add a 321 square foot drive-up teller building with the new drive-up ATM. Uh, as the board is probably aware, uh, Needham Bank's been around for a while, it's been in the town since the late 1800s, uh, actually started at 1063 Great Plain Ave. back in 1922. Uh, don't worry, I'm not going to give a year-by-year, blow-by-blow description of what they've done. I would like to though, remind the board, and I'm not sure who was there, but back in 2012, probably one of the major improvements made by the bank, and as you're probably aware, uh, Needham Bank has a history of, I'm going to use the word modernizing, or addressing customer needs as those customer needs and experiences change. Uh, and then back in 2012, uh, the board may recall, we eliminated, uh, what used to be called Eaton Square, uh, and the bank, uh, in conjunction with the town, did a, I'm going to call it a cooperative or joint, uh, project, uh, where the municipal parking lot and the Needham Bank parking lot, uh, were totally redone, uh, almost as a single parking lot. And at that time, uh, the bank added, uh, approximately just under 12,000 square foot additional space to the bank building and added the drive-up ATM. Uh, so the reason we're here, as I'm saying, is the bank, uh, continues to make improvements for customer experience. Uh, I think there was a trend, uh, in the direction that we're going, uh, well before COVID, where more and more people were, are using electronic banking, uh, fewer people are going physically into the bank unless they have a reason to sit down with the bank executive, be it a mortgage, be it investments, et cetera. Uh, COVID really, I think, amplified that, uh, and between that and the technological improvements, uh, that have been made, uh, people are just not banking the way they used to and Needham Bank is looking to address that. Uh, again, as I said, there's been a dramatic spike increase in the utilization of online and electronic banking. And I always proud to say that that includes my 90-year-old mother, uh, who during COVID, uh, learned how to do all her banking practically online. There's also been, as they say, a decrease in, uh, customers physically coming to the bank. Uh, and when they do come to the bank, uh, they prefer to utilize drive-through tellers and/or ATM machines, and as they say, the exception of those who come in to me privately with the bank personnel. So, in a, during the COVID period, on top of all of that, uh, the bank had a majority of the bank employees, uh, working remote, uh, and they've kept, uh, at least a limited, on a limited basis, most of this, uh, ability for their employees to work remotely. It's not full-time, uh, but many of them are clearly two or three days, uh, not coming to the bank itself. So, to address all of the above, as they say, we want to convert the existing mezzanine area, um, to executive offices, about 1,365 square feet of floor area, and this basically would free up, uh, the existing executive offices, uh, for when there is a need for private customer conferences. In addition, uh, we, as I say, we're proposed to demolish the existing drive, drive-up ATM and replace that with a 321 square foot, uh, drive-through teller with a drive-through ATM. Uh, I'm just going to add that, uh, we did have several meetings, uh, with the department heads, uh, with the, uh, help of, uh, the planning office that has helped us locate where we're putting the current building, uh, so that we appropriately, A, have it in the right zoning district, and B, have it appropriately, uh, set off from the, uh, the property lines, uh, as required. And I know in addition to that, we recently met, uh, with the design board, uh, and, uh, I got that one very well. They, uh, seemed to, uh, like the project. So having to that, that's the general overview, that's why we're here. Uh, Derek will probably take it from here to show you exactly what we're doing in terms of the technical support.
Yeah, before I do that, just a couple of comments on the existing drive-through. Cause during COVID, we did get a lot of complaints on the drive-up ATM, um, the way it's situated now, it has a curb cut that jumps out after the customer drives up to the existing drive-up ATM. And that forces them to sometimes step out of their car because they don't want to hit their tire onto that curb, you know, jet that's there. So I, I don't think that was well-designed in the original, uh, and this would correct that. In addition, the ATM that's there is a D-Bolt ATM that is now going on 11 years old and has been out of service from a manufacturer standpoint for now over six years. So it is the last of a D-Bolt fleet that we are replaced, we have replaced. This is the last, as well as the walk-up one in the building. So we're trying to get all of our fleet on the same NCR technology, um, and this, this would be the last in making us a one-plus hook. Every time we've added a new NCR replacement for the D-Bolt, our customer complaints have gone down as it's much more receptive to the new technology and accessibility, ADA requirements, everything. So it is imperative that we replace those ATMs. We hope so. That's it.
Okay. Great. Yeah. Thank you.
So as Peter mentioned, um, we are, uh, proposing to construct an additional structure here, which is, um, 321 square feet. So just to give you order of magnitude, that's roughly the size of, um, slightly bigger than a parking space, maybe a, um, a single car garage in size, um, and one, one story. We had the benefit here of, um, an existing parking lot, predeveloped, very few great changes in the parking lot, a flat area to work with. Also sort of the benefit of, of citing, um, citing the building, um, in between two existing curb cuts and the parking lot in general has great site distance anyway. You can sort of see the whole lot from, um, from anywhere within the lot. So that was a real benefit to, to where we were citing it and how we were going to, um, look at site circulation. So I'm going to focus mostly on the revisions and the safety of the site circulation. I think that's the, um, the important aspect here. So, um, I'm going to try to explain it and point at the same time. Currently, the ATM, single drive-up ATM is in this area and that's exactly where we're also proposing, um, the new building. So to use this facility, you would, Great Plain Avenue is down here, here's Garden Street. Um, this is currently already a one-way entrance into the bank parking lot. You would decide, uh, whether you were going to go to the ATM or the, uh, teller somewhere, um, right as you enter the site, or you would continue into the parking lot in a one-way circulation pattern. You would continue on the one-way circulation pattern, um, in a counterclockwise direction, um, or you could continue in a two-way for the rest of the parking lot. So some of the improvements that we've made, um, we needed a little more area, we tried to minimize it, we needed some more area to, to cite the building, so we did have to, um, eliminate five parking spaces, um, from the, from the current layout. Four of those spaces are in this area to accommodate the wider, uh, widths that we needed, but we also didn't, we also wanted to provide some landscaping and, um, maintain the walkway. You would decide at this point whether to go to the ATM machine or the teller window, and so cars would be in this area here and here, uh, potentially a few queued up. We don't expect any major queues. And then you would leave the facility through the second, uh, second curb cut. The second curb cut would remain as it is with a two-way, um, in-out curb cut. However, the change we would make would be that you could no longer take a right to enter the site and circulate that you would have to take a left.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, um, I, I can see what's going on, I can tell what's going on, but the fact that the, uh, the physical one in the auditorium is being pointed to versus the one that's on the screen doesn't, doesn't allow people to be as zoomed actually to go to see what's going on. It'd be better, it'd be better if that's all off the screen and the camera could focus on the windows in the room if that's the one that's being pointed to by the marker. So, so I just want to, want to relay that these people on Zoom can't really see what's going on.
I, uh, you know, we have to deal with the limitations of what we have.
I understand, I understand that. And, and dealing with it is by doing what I just said.
Yeah. That's a good point. Um, what's on the screen, can't it match what's being discussed or is it some?
There, in the, in the room, there's something different, Jean, uh, and he's, he's pointing to, to something different and we don't have, we don't have another camera to be able, in the room, to be able to, to show that.
No, the camera, no, the, no, that's not true. The camera was showing it. The camera was showing, I, I, my apologies, I, I can't hear your name, but my apologies for not really remembering the name, but it was pointing to what, what was being described. So we do have a camera that will show that, that easel. What is on that?
It, it, I think it's an, it's a, it's a, it's a remote camera, there's no one already in, you know, um, fielding that camera. It's, it's, uh, it's remote and we don't have the full technology suite, including all the telecommunications, uh, facilities that we otherwise would ordinarily benefit from to have someone who's physically running that camera. They're not present here, you can't see that. I understand what you're saying. I now see on the screen, uh, you know, what you were referring to, what that Derek can, um, that Derek can continue to point to, so we can continue with that, for that screen for the...
And I, and I can appreciate, Mr. Chair, how you weren't seeing what we were seeing on Zoom. So I can appreciate how it wasn't obvious to you, to you, so I can appreciate that fact.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Um, so I was, uh, I was just about concluding, um, in conclusion, I, you know, the, the, the building is being cited roughly in the same general vicinity of where we already have the ATM. Um, and the, the site circulation was something we took seriously here and I think we have a good solution. Um, there's some, uh, additional signage that we're proposing that's on our site plans. Um, there's some modifications and new, um, directional arrows, some additional stop conditions, uh, with stop signs and, and, uh, stop lines. And, um, that was how we addressed the, uh, the site circulation. And then I'm also happy to answer any other questions, um, related to settle.
Um, are you able to also discuss, uh, the renovation to the mezzanine space?
Yes.
I'd like to see a visual representation of that, but Alex, I think that means that we'll probably unfortunately need you...
Sit back?
No. Um, what I have is I think A1-01.
Am I going right or wrong?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, we're looking for A1-01.
There you go.
Oh, actually, it's funny, I have online, A1-01 is the internal space, the mezzanine space.
So I'll share this then again?
No, actually.
Actually, that looks like it's the drive-through.
Yes. So I'm looking for this. We have A1-01, which is the mezzanine, which is for the interior space.
Yeah.
And then we have A1-01 here.
This one, this one might be, how would, um, oh, you want to look at the floor plan of the...
I want to, I want people at home to see what I'm seeing right now.
The inside of the branch.
The inside of the existing, so exist, proposed floor plans.
Right there.
They have the same number.
Name. Yes, exactly. All right. Thanks, Alex. Yes. Uh, so, um...
Ron, you want, you want to take this or do you want me to?
No, I can, I can speak, you know, kind of briefly to this as it all of you. So, um, thank you for, whomever got this right image up. Um, the floor plan on the right, there's two floor plans. Floor plan on the right is, uh, the first floor. Floor plan on the left is the second. Um, there's, uh, uh, kind of groupings from, um, the, of front of the building to the, to the rear of basically clustered buildings in additions over the years. Um, the subject area we're talking about is in the lower left-hand corner, which is the corner of, uh, Great Plain and Garden, uh, if I'm remembering them correctly. Um, essentially that lower left quadrant, that lower left corner that you see on both the right-hand side and the left-hand side, specifically the left-hand side we're speaking to, um, is today a double-height space. Um, it is, you know, two stories in height, a single story, but you can see all the way up to a, um, what would, what could be a second-floor ceiling. So we're taking advantage of that volume and adding this, um, intermediate floor. Um, there are a few executive offices, I think three in total, or two, two in total with some support space, a conference room, some waiting area, and then an opening to the floor below. That's that kind of X you see in the plan. So that's essentially the interior program increase that we're referring to. Does that, um, to answer your question?
I, I think so. On the page before that, um, Alex, I apologize, that would be, uh, 0100. On the bottom left, that says open to below. So that's the existing condition, if I understand correctly. What you're proposing is to eliminate that two-story entranceway and to, um, uh, add support, so then you can then add onto that, onto the second floor...
A mezzanine.
A mezzanine space that includes, uh, um, there's still a section that's open to below, but there's an admin office, an area for coffee, um, another office, another office with a conference table and then another conference room. So that's, and that accounts for your 1,300 or and change internal mezzanine square-foot renovation.
That's right.
And then the...
Yeah, well, so what you said is generally correct, just to clarify, the, the two-story entry that you see today will stay. It's the space just to the left of that where the main teller area is that we are taking advantage of the open to below that you referred to.
At the X sign.
So part of that space with the X on it now is going to be utilized as finished space.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, actually, if you look at the, if you look at that second floor existing plan, there's two Xed areas, there's two Xs. There's a sort of small X, the small X, smaller narrow X is a double-story or two-story entry that stands. The bit larger X on the left is the subject area.
Yes, exactly. That's right. I understand that. Thank you very much. I don't know, people at home? I don't know, people at home can see that, because we're not able to point to it online, but I think that, oh, there we go. Alex, thank you very much. And then, and then on the next page. It's that area. So, yeah, and if you, just right there, if you can go back just a little bit more to the right, a little more to the right. Please move the window away. Technical difficulties, we appreciate your patience. So, so there is this quarter-moon rounded area.
So you'll be able to look out from the branch level and into that mezzanine space.
And see that.
And it'll have visual light that'll transpire down and open up that space down below, so it's not totally closed off.
I see that, okay.
That main hallway entrance will stay two stories open too.
Very good, that's helpful for me. I appreciate the explanation for the exterior modification to improve the site circulation and to change the old technology to the new, and also to incorporate an in-person drive-up teller that's roughly 300 square feet in space that you were also referring to. Before I open this up to Planning Board members, comments, and questions, I do, for the record, want to know, we've received the following comments from the town departments. By email on August the 2nd from Fire Chief Tom Conroy, he has no issues. By email on August the 10th from Assistant Public Health Director Tara Gurge, she has no issues. By letter dated August 10th from Town Engineer Tom Ryder, no issues. By memo dated August 8th from the Design Review Board, they have approved the applicant's plan. Alex, I'm putting you on the spot here, Lee, do you recall whether we've received anything from Police Chief Schlitter?
Yeah, we received something on Monday, and I had him to talk about Monday, and it was no comment.
And it was no comment, I saw, I saw that from the Fire Chief, I think, or I did see that, I think that was for another project, but I, I appreciate you confirming that was also for this one. All right, so now I'd open this up to my colleagues for any comments or questions. Paul, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no comments or questions from there, I'm fine.
Artie Crocker?
Just this one minor one, that is, and my apologies if I missed this, this one, my very minor one, and that is just related to the, you know, is there any permeable increase, is, sorry, is there any incummeable increase in surface area here at all? Are you simply shuffling pavement around and keeping the same, let's say, green space, plant, planters, plantings? Is that, I mean, I understand why you're doing it, I think it's fabulous, I'm just, I think I could comment about some plantings, can you just readdress that?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, there is a very, very small increase in impervious area. Insignificant and de minimis, I would estimate it's in the, you know, 200 square feet, so the, there's a little bit of moving around. The new building isn't entirely new impervious, but it's, there is a slight increase.
Artie, do you have any other questions?
Are you dealing with some plantings around, you're dealing with some plantings around the building, something that affect, I believe, is that true?
Yeah, the, in general, banks have very nicely maintained plantings, so we're maintaining what we have and will be protecting some of the mature shrubs and trees and also supplementing with some new landscape.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Anything further, Artie?
No, that's it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you very much. Jean, do you have any comments?
Yes, I used to live at the corner of May and Garden Street, and I recall very well when the plans came in for the various, the new building for the bank on Garden Street and for the prior renovations of the parking lot. And first of all, I wouldn't say how, what a wonderful building that new bank building is on Garden Street and how well it fits into the neighborhood considering that, you know, residence is across the street. So I know it's your intention to do a good job here, but I'm, I was looking, I'm looking at sheet 5A5.01, which is the after view from Garden Street, and I'm recalling that the neighbors, particularly those who lived right across from this, were very concerned about trees and shrubs along the edge, wanting to see them screaming the parking lot, et cetera. And when I look at A501, I don't see any plantings, I mean, I, at least, I don't see any that are right in front of the building.
Just, Jean, Jean, I'm going to stop you right there for one moment, please, so that, Alex, that's perfect, I just want.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, that plan. And then also, there is a landscape plan, L101, you don't have to turn to it, but I think my question will be understood. There's a note, a note, existing, existing honey locust, et cetera, to be relocated, and it's not clear to me, is, is there an existing tree or trees that separate this area that's going to be for the drive-up from Garden Street? And will, those trees aren't shown on any of these plants that I can see on A501, but are there trees, will they be retained? When the legend speaks of relocating, are they going to be relocated somewhere else on the site, which wouldn't be good, because the whole idea is to provide screening on the edge for the sake of the residents of Garden Street.
Derek, can I speak for one, 30 seconds, and then I'll defer to you if that's okay?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, so I just want to mention, you know, in regard to A501, I think, you know, I understand your concern, your point, I would say the site plans and the landscaping plans that are submitted fully supersede these drawings. These drawings are intended to sort of reveal and expose and study the architectural structure. If we were to, in fact, veil that with plantings as they are planting, as Derek will probably walk you through, we wouldn't really be able to study the building. So if you can look at these four drawings on A501 as just about the building and not about the screening of the building, they are not included or explored whatsoever on these four drawings. Derek, if you could talk about the plants from there, that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, I was going to say the same thing, the purpose of these plans was more the materials of the building, so they do not include our intention for the landscaping. The landscaping sheet L100 was designed by our landscape designer, the landscaping is quite robust, that was one of the design goals here, was to provide plantings and screening between Garden Street and the, and the new structure. There are some nice honey locusts that aren't so big that they cannot be replanted, so that's some of the notation on, of the honey locusts, is that we would, we're going to, we're going to keep them, there's, I think, three of them there existing, and one in particular will be maintained and kept in the same general vicinity, but does need to be replanted. And then in addition to that, we're supplementing what's already out there, so it'll be an improvement. And the lot itself, where we're removing five spaces, we're actually increasing some of the island areas, which will also be landscaped as well.
Okay, yeah, I did notice that, but if you, just focus on the setback area between the building and Garden Street, is, am I reading L100 correctly? Will there be three trees or four trees or what?
You're reading that correctly, I believe there's three now, and I'm looking at it right now, there'll be, there'll be three in the final condition.
Okay, and then there'll also be the various bushes that are shown on the landscape plan.
Correct, bushes and perennial grasses, yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it.
Does anyone else from the board have any comments or additional questions? At this point, I'd like to turn to the public. Alex, do we have any, I apologize, because you've been kind of running their presentation for them and trying to keep our.
We just have one, I think you would not recommend that.
Okay, so I look in the room, we don't have anyone here with a hand up, so with that, is there, do we have sufficient evidence and testimony to close the hearing and decide?
Mr. Chair, I move we close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by Artie Crocker, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote in alphabetical order. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair is aye, the hearing is closed. We thank you both for coming, thank you, all three of you for coming, and thank you for the Needham Bank, people that were here online on Zoom, the specialists, good to meet you, Jim, Derek, thank you very kindly, thanks for coming, we apologize for the delay and appreciate your patience.
No problem.
Thanks very much, very good.
As a process, do you put it on the next agenda to finalize conditions, is that your general practice?
So, so I think, Lee, when would you intend to schedule?
I think, I think our goal in our plan, our goal is to have this draft decision in front of the board on September the 7th, when they next meet.
We have another hearing on September 7th, is that correct?
That's what you just said.
We have another hearing, but I think the goal would be to get the decision on this project, you know, on your agenda, so that you can vote it on at that meeting.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So that would be the intent so far.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Time is of the essence, so I've had that.
Understood.
Well, we're in a drought, so.
Yeah, exactly.
The plantings might have to wait.
The rain's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very kindly.
Your own lips to God, dude.
Thank you, have a good night.
At this point in our agenda, I turn to the request to release the bond for Hunter Ridge, located at 1135 Webster Street, the definitive subdivision. I note for the record that we've received, we received a letter from April 7th, from, April the 5th, rather, from our town engineer acknowledging the work, I think it was, acknowledging that, I think on the 5th, that they were going to go through for town meeting to accept the road, and a letter from town engineer on August the 10th saying that the work is complete, and we have from July 25th a letter from their attorney, John Connolly, requesting release of the remaining $10,000 on the bond. Does anybody have any comments or questions about this release? So, Lee, at this point, do we just take a vote to release the bond?
At this point in time, you just need to vote to release the $10,000 performance bond, and we're still retaining the Off-Street Dreams bond for that subdivision, but the $10,000 performance bond can be released.
And that's, and we have acknowledgement, as I mentioned, from the town engineer that that work had been complete.
Yes, and the street's been accepted, it was accepted at the most recent town meeting.
So I, Mr. Chair, I move that we release the performance bond for the Hunter Ridge Road subdivision plan at 1135 Webster Street.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Artie Crocker, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Jean McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We have unanimously decided to release the $10,000 bond for the 1135 Webster Street definitive subdivision. Now come the minutes for June 7th and June 21st.
Yes, if I may present just a couple of questions that are highlighted in yellow on June 7th, just so we can decide what to do about those, those parts that weren't clear. At the bottom of page two, there's a sentence that says, "The visual length of the Highland Avenue has been reduced by 35 feet." That is, sentence is completely unclear, it's not clear what it relates to, or what length it's talking about. I propose just deleting the sentence, I don't think it adds anything, and I don't know what it means. Somebody would have to review the entire recording to try to figure it out. Does anybody think that's important enough to follow up and try to find out what it really was meant to say, or should we just read it?
I think, I think they might, I mean, I don't think it's going to hurt you if you just read, but I think they might have been referring to the fact that there's been a cutout in the building, which then gives this kind of visual separation, so it doesn't seem as long as it was. That may be what's being referred to, but I'm finding either way, that you're, I'm not taking it up.
In comparison, you mean to a previous iteration?
Yeah, yes, yes, at some point, yeah, yeah, they changed, they, to break it up, they changed it to change, the vision break up the length, the width, the length of the building on holiday.
You're right, you're trickling my memory, Artie, I think you're right, and so maybe all we say is the visual length of the building, well, it's not even just the visual length, but the building on, on the Highland, I would say, on the Highland Avenue frontage has been reduced by 35 feet. Okay?
Very good.
All right, then in the, in the next paragraph, which is right after that on page three, I think it's just certain trees in the second line were misspelled. I tried to Google and find a tree that's called linder, L-I-N-D-E-R, there's no such thing, there's lindens, and locust, it's locust.
I think you're right.
All right, that's a pretty easy one.
I want a map, a map, terminology, I've got the three from all of them.
Okay, we'll make those changes. On page six, in the paragraph third from the bottom of page six, Doug Fox's comment, he says in the second line, "He feels they should start at seven," and I think it might be a dot there, that he feels they should start at point seven. I think he's referring to floor area ratio.
He was, he was.
Yeah, so we should, we just put in F-A-R, I think people would know what that means, okay?
And Jean, to your point, whenever I, whenever, in all the correspondence I have, engineering and stuff I'm doing, whenever there's a point, they put a zero before it, so 0.7, then it becomes quite clear that it's point seven.
That's a good idea, so 0.7, okay. Then, last thing, this is rather minor, but on page seven, Mr. Crocker is quoting in the second line saying, "Commuter bicyclists already bike with cars." Do you mean to say on roads? Do you mean to, to say on roads or on roadways with cars?
That's certainly what I mean, what I was referring to, that they, that they've learned, you know, the commuter bicyclists have learned to be, be within the, the car lanes and use the, and use the laws, the laws of the road related to how bikes are supposed to use. That's what it becomes.
Right. So is it sufficient to leave it the way you had it? Commuter bicyclists already bike with cars?
Yes, that's fine.
All right. We'll just leave it alone. Not make any change.
I'm fine putting on roadway with cars. I'm fine adding that in there. It's, it's, it sounds a little bit more intelligent as far as what actually is going on.
Okay.
Jean.
We'll make the change. Okay.
Jean.
That's it then.
Jean, Jean, excuse me.
Yeah.
Also, actually, on page four, you had a comment that we did not discuss.
Oh, really? I might have missed it.
Which is on the second paragraph, "The sidewalks will be rebuilt from the..."
Oh, thank you.
You intended to remove "the." "Will be rebuilt from Highland Gould," from, oh, from the Highland, from the Gould Highland intersection to Nona. Nona.
Yeah. Is that, is that what's meant? Because from Gould to Nona doesn't really make sense because it's all Gould. Right? So they must be talking about the intersection of Gould and Highland. Nona is the street that comes into Gould, right? So the rebuilding of the sidewalks would be...
Well, I think, I think it's, I think what you, I think what you've done is it makes it, it makes it, I think it's appropriate, appropriately to cite an intersection down to a certain road. I mean, there are other ways of wording it, but there's nothing.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to make sure that for the record.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Okay. So we're good with, with this, with saying rebuild from the Gould Highland intersection to Nona. Okay. All right, then, that and the red, the redlining is just non-substantial changes for clarity or, or spelling or grammar. So I'm moved that we accept the minutes of June 7th, 2022, with the changes discussed tonight as redlined.
We have a motion, we have, we have a motion by Jean McKnight, a second by Artie Crocker to approve the minutes of June the 7th. Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote in alphabetical order. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We've accepted the minutes of June the 7th. And Jean, the minutes of June 20, as, as discussed tonight and as redlined, the minutes from June 21st, I don't believe had any comment, so did I miss anything?
I haven't had an opportunity to review them.
Okay.
And I haven't even read them.
Oh, dear.
So if others have read them and feel comfortable, be my guest, but I'm going to refrain from voting on it.
Very good. We'll take that up another time. Thank you very much. Lee, did you want to discuss December meeting dates?
Yes. We normally meet on the first and the third Tuesday of the month, and, but, you know, in December, we have the Christmas holidays, and the select board and the school committee have changed when they're going to meet, and they've kind of jumped on our schedule. So they're meeting on the 6th and the 20th, and the reason that that's important is that we are covered by cable, and they can only cover two boards. So they're covering the select board, and they're covering the school committee on what were, you know, previously our dates. So I think we need to find alternatives for that month. So there are a couple options. One option is, you know, during the same weeks we normally meet, we choose a different day. We either meet on a Monday or a Wednesday, which is what I would recommend we do. The other option is to have just one meeting that month, but I think that would, that probably wouldn't, that would probably be just too tight for us given our, our current permitting schedule.
So we, so you're, so do we need a mo, we don't need a motion to change our schedule, right?
No, we don't need a motion. It's just I want to, you know, I want to put it, I want to agree on some alternative times because, you know, as projects come in and we're scheduling hearings, you know, a month or a month and a half out, I just want to agree on what our scheduled change will be in December.
So I would propose that we do December the 5th instead of December the 6th, and December the 19th instead of December the 20th?
Okay, so Monday.
On Monday, correct. Thank you.
19th is Hanukkah according to my calendar. Paul, is that a problem for people of the Jewish faith?
That's not a problem for me.
Adam?
Do you want to be home for Hanukkah for yourself?
I have a 10-year-old, will light the menorah and do presents and probably maybe something in the synagogue.
Maybe he can do it here.
That'd be adorable. I'd love that.
Can we, can we check with town council to make sure that it's constitutionally committed?
What if we did the 21st instead?
That's, that's fine.
That's getting awfully close to Christmas. Christmas is Monday, I think, so, you know, the Christmas weekend is, I'm, I'm just commenting on it. So is Monday, December 19th, the first night of Hanukkah?
Monday the 19th is the first night.
It says first day, it says first day on my calendar, yeah.
First day. So Sunday's probably first night.
Oh, Sunday is arrow.
Yeah, Sunday's probably first night, yeah.
So we're just going to confirm that, and then if so...
I'm looking it up right now.
We'll hope that Sunday, December 18th.
Very good. So then I'm, I'm fine to do it on the 19th.
Okay, great.
Okay, that's a good manner.
I might, actually, though, what I will say is, can we do it at 7:30 instead of at 7:00, so I still have a little bit of time to...
Yeah, light the candles because it'll be getting dark early.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So I, I've got something for the first, second, third night, and I still have to fill out the other five nights. All right.
Okay, so just to summarize, it's December 5th at 7:00 and December 19th at 7:30?
Yes. Alex, you have that?
Okay.
You're nodding. Exactly.
All right.
We're all set, so that's well done.
Location T V D at probably Charles River.
Oh, that's fun. Very good. By then, we do anticipate our facilities to be operational for...
Okay, so I cannot change it on my calendar because it's from...
She'll, she'll do that after. Alex will do that after. Artie, you okay with that to accommodate Hanukkah?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm fine.
On Christmas? All right.
I'm a, I'm a Unitarian. I'm good, I'm good no matter what's going on.
Well, if you're Unitarian, you should be lighting the candles.
Like, like I said, Paul, I'm good with whatever's going on.
You're good at my house, Artie. Come light the menorah. All right, very good. So Lee, do you want to run us through your report? Do you have a report for tonight?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure. Just a couple items, I think. I just want to, you know, point out, I think I sent everybody the final DHCD guidelines for MBT, for MBT communities, you know, came out last week. I think I sent everybody a copy of the actual draft guidelines, and we're, we're currently reviewing them to understand what their implications are for Needham. I think there were two pieces of good news out of them. One is that we've now classified as a commuter rail town community, which means that the total number of units we have to provide has been reduced from, I think around 2,300 to around 1,700. And also, our deadline for compliance has been moved from December of 2023 out to, out to the end of December of 2024. So this information has been shared, I think, with you, the select board, and the housing working group, and it's certainly going to frame the continued work of the, of the housing working group. And also, the draft environmental impact report on the Highland Science Center project came out at the end of last month, and comments are due back from the town next week, Monday. And so G P I is doing a review of that draft report to ensure that the comments that the town had raised earlier have been addressed, and if not, what the deficiencies are, and I'm working with Rebecca Brown on that. And DPW is also doing a review of the draft report to ensure that the concerns and comments that they raised have also been addressed in that draft report. And so I'm coordinating with them, with, for, and the town manager's office for a response that's due next week, Monday. And then I just would just kind of point out that on the calendar, looking forward on September 7th, we received electronically today, we have the continued hearing on the Highland Science Center schedule, and we received today electronically a revised set of drawings from the applicant, you know, reflecting some of the comments the board had raised at the last meeting, in particular, the layout of Gould Street, and it's incorporate, it's original treatment as an easement across the property, and now it's being moved so that it's actually going to be managed within the right of way. And some additional documentation that's also going to be reviewed by G P I and the staff. And so that should be ready for the public hearing that we planned for September 7th on that. And also, on September 7th, we have the hearing planned on the brewery zoning. So that is kind of looking out to September, what's on, what's on the radar. And also, that the housing working group is going to be meeting, I think, on September 8th, and we're all, Jean and Karen Sennaberg and I are all working. Karen's trying to put together the draft housing plan, which the committee will be looking at at their meeting on September the 8th.
Thank you very, oh, Lee.
If I, if I could add to that on the housing plan working group, and Lee, I actually thought our meeting on September 8th was, is to review the MBTA guidelines and to have the subgroups present their priorities and strategies as their final reports. And then the September 29th was review of the preliminary draft housing plan.
I think you're right. I might have, I might have got, I might have a wrong in my head. You might, I think you're right, Jean. I think you're right.
Yeah, I'm looking at the proposed revised schedule that was discussed a couple weeks ago.
Right, you're right. We, we changed it. You're right.
Yeah. So with regards to the MBTA guidelines, it's, it's a good thing, of course, that they got rid of that bus schedule, bus terminology entirely. So we are now a community that has to provide 15% of its total dwelling units, you know, for future zoning. But one of the most difficult things, why I should also point out, they, they very much, very much fine-tuned what the obligations are for various communities so that the, the smaller communities, especially those that don't actually have any mass transit in their towns, but only adjacent to the communities, their obligation has been greatly reduced. There's a table attached to the guidelines that very much fine-tunes those requirements for those small towns, but it hasn't really changed for Needham. But as part of that fine-tuning, because we have so much acreage within a half mile of four traffic transit stations, actually, we have to have 90% of our proposed rezoning areas within a half-mile area. And it used, the prior version made us think we could have, you know, half of it outside the area and half of it in, but now they want 90% within the area. And we're still dealing with, we have to have a total of 50 acres, and 25 acres of it have to be contiguous. And that we're finding hard to expand some of our areas so that they are 25 acres, so we're really struggling with that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. We have...
Oh, excuse me. One more question, Lee, on, on the Highland, whatever they're, what are they calling it?
Innovation Center?
The Highland Science. Again, do the new plans show the new layout of Highland Avenue?
I just got these plans today at 4 o'clock. I have not looked at them. They came in by, they came in electronically today, and the hard copies are being dropped off to my work, so.
All right. Well, I'm very, I'm very curious about that.
I did, I did have a specifically a conversation with Rebecca to check the latest plans of record, to make sure that the layout is consistent with the latest plans of record, so that your issue is, is addressed.
Absolutely. And it's not my issue, it's compliance with zoning.
Well, it's a compliance, it's, well, it's the issue that you raised and brought to my attention. So it's being, it's being looked at.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Jean and Lee, thanks for your report. For correspondence, we've received a letter from Lee to Kate dated July 1, acknowledging our shared, our support of some of the select board's goals, and in particular with the housing plan working group. We've received an email dated August 1 from David Lazarus with respect to 44 Charles River Street, and we've also received an email dated August the 2nd from Cindy and Bill Cattile, also regarding 44 Charles River Street. And that is our correspondence. Alex or Lee, did either of you have any other correspondence that we received late in the game? Anything else? Very good. Does any board member have any other comments or questions?
I just want to comment that 484 Charles River Street, for those watchers who don't, might not know what that's referring to, is a very large acreage parcel that the heirs of the original owner want to, want to dispose of, and the town has been interested in acquiring some of that parcel for conservation purposes. And I have no idea what the status is, but that's what the people are writing about.
So let me fill in what I've heard about that. First of all, it's not just 484. There are also two, three, slightly more than three acre parcels that are, that front on Charles River Street, so that it's a total of around 20, 24 to 25 acres. So what happened was that originally, the property was on the market. The town had partnered with a land developer to make a bid. The Foster family accepted bids. I don't know how many bids they got, but they went with the highest bid. I was told that they actually signed a purchase and sale agreement and got a deposit, and then the, the party that was going to buy it walked away from that deal. So it's back on the market at a slightly reduced price, and the town is now in discussions with the Foster family to see, to see what we can do. I believe, again, this is all just kind of hearsay evidence, but I believe that the town is still partnering with the same developer to try to have a, a partnership where the developer puts in a development of some kind and the town gets, gets some conservation land.
Well, that's good news, but thank you for that, Paul.
Thanks for the update.
They followed one for me. I thought I heard that the town was also reaching out to some conservation groups and services to try to form some partnership as well to the area. You remember that?
No, I, I have not, but that would be nice.
I, I serve on the board of the Needham Land Trust, and I haven't heard of any such outreach.
Thank you. And thanks for the explanation of that geographic area and what people are referring to. I know that many are, you know, interested in seeing that that, as much of that land as possible be preserved, and yet it's on the open market, and the open market forces tend to do as they do. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Artie and a second by Jean. Any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are adjourned.